Wanted to make sure and let you know that we are recording this. For our archives, so that folks who can't join us this evening can view this at a later time.
Yeah, no, no problem. Totally understand that. So, so I, I, I think what I experience here downtown, it's been a downtown that I've been familiar with since I was a little kid. And so I would say the sense I get from what's going on here at the center of the core of the city, seems to be a lot of good work, right? From, I mean, I remember when I first got into office, participating with Mighty Mike McGee on some spoken word stuff at, you know, local color and such, which I thought was wonderful, man. I, I, I hope we can do that someday again. So, so here downtown, it seems like there's a lot of things going on. We have the jazz festival this weekend. But, but I think my fundamental, the fundamental problem that I see is that it is not where most of the other people live, right? In the other parts of the city. And, and, and so I think that's one of the challenges we have. And that is one of the reasons that, I think about two budget cycles ago, I got some money for Powwow to bring some of the muralists down to South San Jose, because I, I continuously strive to try to find places and, and opportunities to, 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 to grow, sort of our network of, of murals and artwork and, and other things like that. But yeah, so I just wish it was more spread out throughout other parts of the city. Because I have a lot of residents that just don't come downtown as frequently as many, many of us do. And so that is one of the critiques I have. And so I strive to make sure that we bring those to other parts of the city.
Great. So, so with that, I mean, what do you see as the role of the city council as well as the mayor in building stronger experiences of place identity in our neighborhoods?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we play a big role, obviously, as the leaders of the city. Uh, I think it needs to be important to us, uh, one, because I think it's just the right thing to do, but it's also important to many of the residents, right? Uh, and so, uh, I think we play an important role in trying to create, more than anything, try to create the space that allows you folks, right? The wonderful folks that have all this creativity, that are putting on all these different things, have all these wonderful ideas, giving you the space and the opportunity to do that with putting a, a, as little obstacles as possible from preventing you from doing that. Uh, and, and so that, that's the role I see as the city officials is that we, we need to help, uh, build a conducive environment so that way all these things can take place.
And that's demonstrated, of course, you, uh, through your support of Powwow San Jose. For those folks who don't know that, I mean, Powwow San Jose has been in existence for several years now, which is a collective of, uh, San Jose-based artists, muralists, and creat- creatives. Again, you know, trying to bring beauty to the city of San Jose.
And Ron, I can give you a very clear example. For example, near the corner of Blossom Hill and Snow, the area that I represent, there, there was an old roller rink there that just recently got demolished. It wasn't in good condition, but it turned into a furniture store now. What's happening is we're actually going to build senior low-income housing, uh, there. And during the course of the process, when that development was coming forward, I asked them very specifically to leave a big blank canvas, if you will, facing Blossom Hill Road. So that way, when it's fully built out, we have a space to actually bring some artwork to that part of the community. And so, uh, they've agreed to do that. And, and so I expect that that's going to be a, a beautiful canvas for someone to really take an opportunity to, to do something great for the community. But that is an example of how we can help facilitate some of, um, you know, the things that I think you all desire to, to see in our community.
That's great to hear, because, you know, I just, we just live a stone away from Blossom and Snow. And that was the old Aloha Roller Rink, also, I believe, back in the day.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, so with that, you know, you talked about, you know, asking, that's a private development, correct? You know, you know, um, as you know, you know, private percent for art, uh, policy was added to the council's priority list, uh, in 2020. And just before the band- pandemic struck. So, you know, we're kind of hopeful, but then the pandemic came. So with so much private development coming into San Jose, you know, what can be done to get this policy off the back burner, especially since you had just shared that example of, you know, uh, that complex coming up there and, and asking them to save a blank canvas, uh, so that possibly we could have an artistic, you know, mural up there. So what do you think we can do, you know, to support the council and especially those who voted, uh, for it? And I believe you were one of those too. Thank you so much, uh, to get it off the back burner and to make it a priority. We know there's a lot of things happening right now, but we know that arts and culture and creativity is what's actually helping us through this pandemic times.
Yeah, I think one thing to understand is that the, that the priority setting process, given COVID and everything that we've been through, has fundamentally changed this year. And that's why, if you paid attention to that meeting, it was a cluster, you know what, of, of process. And we, we, the council members had difficulty understanding and guiding it. And so a lot of things that we, uh, had desired to work on, uh, to put as a priority, hence the priority setting process, got put to the back burner because of COVID. And so I think, um, moving forward, especially as we're making our way out of this pandemic and, and the city's being revived and awakened and things are coming, going back to normal, if you can, if you will. Uh, I think that's an opportunity to revisit the past priorities that we made. The other thing that we recognized, my office was, um, working with the city manager's office and thinking through how we can restructure the priority setting process fundamentally, whereby we're not, we're not pitting the arts against homelessness, right? Two worthy sort of objectives. And so, uh, and obviously the pandemic hit, so all that went to the side and all that work we had done sort of fell to the wayside. But that is something that I'm very much interested in working on, is trying to figure out how we make a priority setting process in the future much more equitable to some of these, to the variety of important things that we care about here in the city. And so I think as things get back to normal, the next priority setting process, my hope is that some of the things as we, as we're trans, some of the focus as we're transitioning out of the pandemic, those are going to be addressed and we're going to get those rolling. We're going to be able to revert back to what we originally prioritized and maybe re-envision the process to figure out how we can elevate some of these issues and not have them competed against each other.
Right. Well, thank you on that, because, you know, a lot of folks don't even think about, especially our electeds, that arts can be part of the solution to homelessness, to safety, you know, transportation, et cetera. And I think, you know, that's one of the key things that, you know, you've realized is how can we incorporate, um, artists and the creative solutions into some of the social issues that we're facing right now. You know, we just went through the budget process, you know, which Art Center, the Arts Advocates was part of in terms of ensuring that, uh, we were also, uh, you know, included as part of, you know, priority, which again, thank you so much. And, and also I think Mayor Licardo also, uh, realized that from our advocacy. But what, what were your top priorities for 21 to 22 in the city budget? Do you have any thoughts about the final budget, you know, as it pertains to art, arts and culture as we go into the new, you know, this new, uh, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I have to admit that if I, I, I was trying to comb my brain as to what the outcomes were as it relates to arts and culture. So I'll have you educate me a little bit as to how that ended up. But I can tell you, but my priorities, you know, I, I represent the southern part of the city, that really quite literally bumps up against the Morgan Hill. And we have what we call a gateway into our city, which is Monterey Road. And so that's been in, in disarray for many, 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 many years. And so one of the priorities I had is to really bring, shine a light on the issues on Monterey Road related to dumping and just beautification of our city as it relates to that space. And that was one of the priorities that we really, um, invested a lot of time and effort to try to get some funding for that. Some of that's moving forward. We recently resurfaced all of Monterey Road and, you know, things are looking up, but there's still a lot more work to do. So that was the focus I had. And, and that is, you know, actually, before I go on, one of the things that we explored in the budget documents that we submit, I was poking around and I was probably going to try to submit, we were getting estimates, for example, from some of the departments on putting some murals up in District Two along the pillars by Blossom Hill and Monterey Road. The cost estimates were through the roof, and so we decided not to submit those documents. But, um, even though the focus was Monterey Road, blight and, and cleanliness of the city, my mind is still very much on how do we beautify our city in much different ways, not just by picking up the litter, but by actually creating these spaces that give people, you know, um, appreciation for their neighborhood, right? And know that they live a very resilient, vibrant place. And that's what I think artwork does. And so that's what we tried to do, we, we, we were going to do, but the numbers were just off the chart. And on top of that, if, I'll just end with this, on top of that, we didn't know where the budget was going to be, right? The predictions were that there was going to be this humongous shortfall and such. And so that didn't necessarily come to fruition, given that we had an influx of, of federal money. But some of that, we're going to have another bite at the apple in, in October, in which we're going to figure out how to spend close to, I think it's close to $50 million in other ways. And so I think some opportunities still exist to, to do some of the things we desired to do.
Great. And, and, you know, what I had referred to earlier is, is our advocacy, uh, with mayor and city council to have some of those federal American rescue plan dollars go to shore up and support the Office of Cultural Affairs, who, you know, were devastated in terms of, you know, we're talking about the T O T, the, you know, transient occupancy tax being hard hit because of pandemic. So, you know, again, you know, part of our, our work as arts advocates and, uh, creatives is to ensure that, council members like yourself and the mayor are aware that the arts and culture can play a valuable role. You talked about the, the blight, you know, and you're probably familiar with, uh, Beautify San Jose program. So I think there are a lot of opportunities to incorporate arts and culture, um, across some of the sectors in, in our city.
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you an example, another example, on the corner of Branham Lane East and Monterey Road, we have the Eden Bell Library, and there was a mural that got put up there some time back. And, and that's an area that has a lot of graffiti, especially along the sound wall there on Monterey Road. I've contemplated trying to commission an artist to paint a, a vast mural along that long stretch of, of, of fence to see if we can prevent folks from tagging it and doing other stuff, right? Or even giving some of these taggers the opportunity to sort of show us their skills and do something that's creative, that can be beneficial to the community instead of sort of damaging it. And so what we found with that mural at that library is that it hasn't been touched. As you all know, people respect that type of work, right? And you often don't get it, uh, van, well, some would say vandalized, right, or tagged. But yeah, that, that's very much present in mind for me. And so we're consistently looking for opportunities in which we can address one issue by plugging in, plugging the holes in other issues and bringing those forward.
Okay, well, you know, we know that, uh, you made public safety, you know, we're talking about the, you know, the issues over there on Monterey. One of your top priorities in your 2020 reelection campaign. So how do you envision artists helping to make San Jose a safer city? As we talk about, you know, ways that we could provide as artists, creatives, cultural makers, uh, you know, solutions?
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I guess when I think of artists, right, I think of artists as in artwork, uh, murals, paintings. But I also think of musicians, other things of that nature, right? And so I think that's a very real sort of, and, and very productive way to sort of, uh, have the community build community vibrancy and, and, and acknowledge that they, or, or try to build community pride, if you will. And so what we've done, for example, one of the things we're trying to do, because I see that connection, right? Getting people out to meet, to know one each, know, know one of, one another and be able to communicate and know their neighbors, I think, is, is a way to do that. And so we close our, there's a ci, there's a street called Coronado in District Two, which is one of only about three streets in the city that have remained closed during the pandemic. And so we're actually had a staff meeting today in which we're going to try, we're going to be reaching out to San Jose jazz musicians to try to activate that space, right, to bring people out of their homes, to start, and obviously cognizant of sort of the, the health issues that are, they're going around our country. But, uh, those are very real examples in which we think, I think, uh, that we can, uh, that can increase public safety. Because I think, you know, in my mind, as a former investigator with Public Defender's Office, I think if people know one another, right? If you know your neighbor, if you know the guy that lives the other block down, you're less likely to do something to his home, to, to vandalize it, whatever it may be, right? And so I think building those relationships are very important, and the arts are a very important way and, and to, to do some of that. And that's what we seek to do.
Well, you know, are there any particular policy areas that you believe could, um, benefit from collaborative engagement with San Jose's creative sector to find new approaches, uh, to problems? Say, for example, one of the things that's floating around, uh, not just in California, but throughout the nation, is an Artist in Residence Program where artists, whether they're visual artists, performing artists, are placed in residency in city or county offices to provide another perspective. What is your kind of thoughts about that, an Artist in Residence, um, within a governmental structure?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, I think that, that sounds like a great idea. I had, you know, I was reading some of the questions. I hadn't thought about that. Have someone sort of present of, uh, and that can sort of infuse artistic sort of ideas and such into everything the city does. I, I, I think there's value to that, right? I mean, I know sometimes even, you know, we, we've heard that term that San Jose is referred to as Tan Jose, right? Where, I mean, we even just, the vibrancy of the damn colors of the city just don't exist. And so little things like that, right? You go to other cities and you see these beautiful buildings, which are pieces of art, right? That are designed in particular ways that really gets you to, to ponder, to think, well, how the hell did they do that? It's just amazing, but we just don't have any of that. And, and so I think an Artist in Residence, you know, I certainly don't know what format or how that would take shape, but it seems to me that they would be able to infuse their, their artistry into everything that the city does. And so I see, it seems to me to be a good idea. The other thing that I think about too is, and I've thought about this a lot, but I've never actually reached out to you all, so I'll say it here. But what I know that, uh, the San Jose, some, San, City of San Jose is sometimes viewed as a city that's difficult to do business with, right? Or in, to get things done, right? There's all these red tape, these hurdles. And so what I think what would be interesting for me is for you all to, in, in working with the council office or even the mayor's office, to identify what are those different things that prevent events, artists, whatever it may be, from moving forward, identifying, say, in a list of 10 policy items, whether it be city policies, whatever, you know, things that we have control of, right? Because we're, we're the ones that make the rules. Figuring out what those are and then do away with them to make it much easier to get things off the ground. And so I'm not, I'm not sure if that's been done, but I, I think those are things that we, as a council office, even run into, right? When we want to do events in our community, you need, you know, you, and I'm just making this up, right? But you need three police officers, you need this. And I'm like, I don't think we really need that. I don't think it's really necessary, but hence you got these, you know, unfortunately, you got these requests or these, these, uh, policies in place that force you to do some of those things that can be quite expensive, as you know.
Okay, well, you know, you heard that core, uh, S J A core members here. So, uh, we're actually in, uh, the process of identifying some key arts, cultural creativity policy priorities. So look to hear from us also on some of those things. You know, like cities all around the country right now, you know, San Jose has experienced a lot of social tension, you know, over this past year. And in some ways, residents are more specifically engaged, in others, uh, it feels as, as if we're talking or sometimes yelling past each other. So Harvard sociologist, public policy professor, Robert Pullman, has described the arts as perhaps the most significant underutilized forum for rebuilding community in America. He describes this unique attributes of the arts to build both bonding and social capital. So what are your thoughts on how we can build a more robust and healthy civic life in San Jose, especially as it relates to the artistic, cultural, and creativity sector here?
Yeah, you know, as you're, as you're talking, one of the things that comes to mind is, uh, all the artwork that was commissioned and, and, well, I don't know if it was commissioned, but, uh, the artwork that was going around, uh, up at the airport, right? I know it was a little controversial. There were some folks from my district, to be honest, that were complaining about some of the artwork. But I think, uh, to a certain extent, it seemed to me it was doing what was, what it was intended to do, right? To poke, to prod, to bring about conversation that normally doesn't happen. And so, uh, especially during these times where, you know, me as an elected official, I'm sure most elected officials would agree with me is that, you know, the community, the country seems very divided. And so, uh, anything we can do to bring, uh, folks together, um, in utilizing arts, whether that be music, you know, traditional art, whatever it may be, I think it'd be helpful. And I think it can help bring forward some important conversations that we need to have, right? Similar to, to the art that was displayed at the airport. And so, yeah, I really do think that it has a place in really in building back our community in, in, to be in a stronger, more resilient, more together community. It certainly has its place and, and, uh, I think it's important.
And I, um, I thank you for also realizing that arts, because I think one of the things in our industry, in our sector, is that many of us are siloed. You know, you've got performing arts here, you've got visual arts here, you've got media arts here, when in fact, we all should be collaborating and, and working with each other. And we're already seeing multi-disciplined arts, uh, collaborations happening.
Wonderful. That's great.
You know, one of the key things that, of course, you're probably, uh, aware of is that, um, arts education is key for the development of young people. And it's particularly important issue for us here at San Jose Arts Advocates. Now, we understand that the city is not directly involved, uh, in our school system. However, the city can play, I believe, as we all believe, an important role in ensuring a high-quality education for our children. So numerous scientific studies, including those by the Harvard Graduate School of Education, have established some significant causal links between arts education and achievement and non-art's academic areas. What opportunities, uh, council member, do you see for the city to support equal access to arts education resources for all San Jose students? Especially, we've done, you know, uh, kind of like an assessment, uh, along with some of our state, uh, you know, uh, arts education allies. And we see that many school districts within this, you know, ci, City of San Jose are not offering arts education. So.
Yeah, you, you know, so, so you're right in, in recognizing that obviously it, it's within the school districts, school board, you know, Department of Education here at the county level. But I, you know, I, I'd like to think that the city can play a role in that. I, I mean, I'll give you an example. During the course of the pandemic, I mean, I, during the last budget process, we got, I think, close to $70,000 to help purchase for kids in, in, in some of these schools that I represent, um, that are in my district, uh, to purchase, uh, tablets, right? To laptops or, or Chromebooks. Why wouldn't I be able to do the same thing and, and create some sort of arts curriculum with the help of folks like you, in which we can fund that, right? I think, I mean, as we're talking, is when this is coming forward, I think it's, it's a good idea. And I don't see why we wouldn't be able to utilize some city resources to do that. I also think that in the space of, uh, the schools and the city and that collaboration, we also have the, uh, School-City Collaborative that exists, in which there's meetings with superintendents, uh, the mayor. And I don't sit on that. Uh, I wasn't appointed to that. But I think that's a very, um, uh, clear place where some of these conversations should be taking place. One other thing that comes to mind is I know that the, 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 uh, city libraries have been building out some curriculum as it relates to, um, children in daycare, in, in preschool, pre-K sort of curriculum and such. I didn't really think about it, but when we had those conversations at the Neighborhood Services Education Committee, I'm not so sure if that curriculum included art.
Right.
So I don't know. I mean, these are some of the things that are coming up as we're talking. But, uh, but, but there's different ways that what the city can be involved if we choose to be. Um, and so I, I think it's a worthwhile effort. And so it just requires conversations with some of the school leaderships to figure, leadership, to figure out if there's a space to do that. But I'm totally for that.
Oh, well, I'm sure we'll have, uh, you know, a conversation with those council members who are on that, uh, particular, um, how was it? Is it a committee, the collaborative?
Yeah, School-City Collaborative. And I think they stopped meeting, they had stopped meeting for a little while, but I think they've now started up again. Sylvia Arenas is on there. I think the mayor's on there. Um, I'm not sure. I think that's probably it. And then obviously you got, uh, school officials that are on there and that, that meet and discuss things related to city and school issues.
Okay, well, we'll make sure to reach out to those folks, because I think it's important to, you know, even though they, you know, hopefully it'll start up again. Because schools are starting as well. Um, so.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things, uh, you know, and thank you again for, for your response to these questions. We wanted to ask in terms of a personal level, do you have any creative outlets? Do you do anything that's artistic?
So I have two left hands and they don't work. So, so what I would say is, you know, I thought about that and, and, um, you know, I used to play the, an instrument. I used to play the trombone. And so I, that was many years ago. And so I guess that was an outlet, but it's been a while. I think that to the extent I have an outlet, it's now it's more about in the backyard planting plants and trying to figure out which ones I want to plant and the color and whatever, right? So I, I think that's the extent of my creativity at the moment. But, but I, but I, you know, I grew up around art. We had a good friend who actually sponsored my family in becoming citizens, who owned an art store here in downtown San Jose. It used to be called Pen and Brush. Um, he went out of business when they put in Light Rail. Uh, but this gentleman had a strong influence in my life, and he, uh, was the, he was actually the head of the San Jose Art League. It's no longer in existence, uh, but I was always around it and got to see a lot of paintings and got to experience a lot of that. And so it's left an impression on me on how beautiful art is and how, what a type of role it can play in one's life, right? It expands your perspective of the world, especially for a kid from East San Jose who had never traveled out of this country until about 20, or out of this, out of this city until about the age of 23, 24. And so, uh, uh, that, I think that's, those are the possibilities that art has. But unfortunately for me now, it's just in the backyard that that creativity comes.
Which is, is still creativity. I think a lot of folks, again, you know, have this, uh, idea of what art, artistry and creativity are and, and as well as culture. So I'm glad to hear that you have that outlet in terms of your creativity. Do you have, you know, if we come to that, do you have anything that you'd like, uh, to ask us or that you'd like to share with us with regards to, you know, your, your work as it relates to the arts, cultural, creative community?
Yeah, I think, you know, you know what, what would be helpful for me, for the, just in thinking about some of the stuff we've been discussing internally, internally recently. We're actively trying to think about what to do with that space, that closed street that we have in District Two. And so the things that interest me are like a night market, um, music, um, you know, on and on, all these possibilities. But I don't know sort of what the, what the possibilities are, right? But my mind is sort of framed by the things I see. And so, uh, I think what would be cool is if there was some sort of toolkit that I can utilize and say, okay, I want to do, you know, music every other Friday on this particular street. What's required? You know, what are the challenges? What are the policies in place that prevent you from doing, or you know, whatever? So that information, I don't, my office doesn't, I think we have a little bit of that, but we need to go out and ask those questions and find it. And so, um, trying to figure out what, what those are i- is, would be helpful. But the other thing that I mentioned that would be beneficial to me is really, really getting a list of policies that you think are impeding some of the, the creativeness of our residents, of you all, uh, you know, for the city to take that next step and, and really be, uh, this, this melting pot, if you will, of, of culture, of vibrancy, of art, of music. I, I think that's what I desire. I want to live in a city like that. Um, and I think most young people, and most people do.
And I, I mean, that's why a lot of folks are, you know, attracted to cities like San Francisco, um, to Oakland and some cities. And, you know, yes, you know, as you had mentioned earlier, you know, there is some artistic, creative, um, vibrancy in downtown San Jose, but not many residents of San Jose come to downtown San Jose. I mean, I, I go to downtown San Jose because that's the hub of where I work as an artistic and cultural consultant.
Yeah.
But I, I, we, you know, that's a great idea. You talk about night market, you talk about how can we get music to those areas that currently are, are cordoned off. And I'm sure several of our core members, of which one of them is Brendan Rossen of San Jose Jazz, will be more than happy to provide, you know, some, uh, information on how to make that happen. I'd love to see a night market in, in D2 somewhere.
And we, and we've gotten the boom, the jazz boombox out there, the, the stage, and we've, we've done that. We've sort of taken, you know, taken that on and stuff. But, uh, but you know, the other thing sort of tied to everything you said is, and this applies to every district, District Four, District Eight, District Five even. But how do we, how do we export some of the goodness that's happening in downtown San Jose and export it to other parts of the city? That's what I get frustrated with sometimes, like, oh, it's great. We have all these murals. It's great. We have this. I love seeing it. It's wonderful. But how do I bring that there, um, to build community, to build, you know, this pride? Um, and we, it's challenging, right? It's challenging. It's not easy.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we hope that you look to San Jose Arts Advocates for, you know, partnering and collaborating. Because one of the things that we do is we try to find opportunities to connect the artistic, cultural, creative community with opportunities like that. I mean, that's why the large majority of the folks are involved and engaged in the downtown core. But it'd be great to have, just similar to Viva Parks, right, Viva Calle, that goes through neighborhoods, to have that type of, you know, artistic, creative, especially during the summer, you know, activity and event that's happening in all our different districts in the city of San Jose.
Correct.
So, I want to, I, I want to give an opportunity for folks to also ask questions, uh, of, of you, uh, Sergio. So I know that, uh, we have several folks here, and if the core members could also help me, because I can't see a lot of times, uh, the entire view. But, uh, if you can raise your hand, that would be great. Um, there's Brother Paul Soto. Uh, I can, uh, have him ask, um, first question of Council Member Jimenez. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, yes, yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Uh, thank you for holding this forum, uh, Councilman Jimenez. It's, it's very rare that I can even like hear you, um, articulate on your opinions. You're very, um, reserved within the context of council. So I appreciate this time with you. Art is the soul made visible. That's, that, that's its goal. That, that's the objective, is art is the soul made visible. And there's many different types and ways in which that happens. Within the Renaissance period, you had the Michelangelo, Raphael, Da Vinci, and they, they made the soul visible within the walls of the Sistine Chapel, so that when you walked in, you were awestruck and you knew that you were in the presence of God and creativity. And so I think that we have lost that, you know, the, the, the complete, um, disengagement from those perspectives. And we have allowed white Anglo, uh, perspectives to dominate what art is. Case in point, the felon statue. You know, I am very, very, very proud of the fact that I did my homework, I did what I had to do, I organized the community, brought them to the forum, and it got removed. Because there are certain, uh, differing opinions as to what we categorize as art. And so, so that's why I appreciate this particular forum. I agree with you with respect to putting the, uh, murals up, because you will not see a mural disrespected, not in this city. The only one that has been is the one on Story Road, where they just painted over the Mexicanos.
Yeah.
Just wiped it out. And, and so my question to you- And and so my question to you is, how do we, as a city, start educating people that that right there is wrong? It's not acceptable. It's not okay. And how do we rectify that by a representation that is a response to that erasure of our culture, of Chicano culture here in San Jose? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, well, you know, yeah. So so, you know, I'm very familiar with where that happened. I grew up in that, well, not in that immediate era, but hanging out in that area. So I know it well. You know, I didn't, I wasn't, I was following that issue somewhat closely, but knowing that it's not in my district, I sort of, you know, we take a backseat to issues that are happening in other districts. And so obviously, you know, erasing or painting over and dismantling that, you know, doing away with that mural is I think to Paul's point, it is in fact erasing one's pride and heritage and such. It's on a private building, but I think that it begs the question, you know, as to whether we need, and I'm not sure exactly what Councilmember Carrasco has done, but it seems to me that we need to move forward a policy or investigate a policy so that we prevent those things from happening. And to the extent we can get that mural replaced in a different location, you know, I think that'd be wonderful as well. I think, you know, Mr. Soto, Paul's point as to to the impact of art and really the importance of it, I think I agree with. And and I think we need to do everything you need to do. We need to do everything possible to preserve some of these pieces that are around the community because they mean so much to so many people. You know, it represents their culture, represents pride in who they are, their identity. And so when we're in fact painting over some of the stuff, we're erasing their identity. And some of these folks, me being one of those growing up in East San Jose, already felt unseen, right? We weren't seen to begin with, right? Let alone the the removal of something that we sort of held in high esteem. And so I totally agree with everything he said and very much appreciate his perspective here as, you know, in addition to everything he shares at council. And Paul, let me share with you publicly just the reason I've been more quiet at council is maybe about a year and a half ago, right before COVID. I had some family circumstances, circumstances that I was working through and still working through that really impacted my ability to to sort of be who I am. But I'm trying to work my way back to being more present, be more cognizant of what's going on at council and really being a louder voice for some of the things that you care about. And so I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Paul, for that question as well. Do we have any other questions for Sergio? I I actually would like to, you know, it wasn't one of the questions, but I'd like to also kind of ask, you know, one of the things that I have been involved in, you know, as an arts and cultural strategist is the establishment and formation of cultural heritage districts. San Francisco has a an official cultural heritage district ordinance, which was established many years ago. They actually now have seven cultural heritage districts in the city of and county of San Jose. And I've had some conversations with some council members. I don't know if maybe I might have talked to you. This was like ongoing. So but what are your feelings about opportunities to codify and to establish some sort of ordinance within the city of San Jose for the establishment of cultural heritage districts? I mean, I can see East San Jose easily being one of the, you know, first cultural heritage districts. But what are your thoughts about that, Sergio?
Yeah, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of what exactly a cultural heritage district would do, but it seems to me to be appropriate. I mean, listen, we we spend a lot of time at council designate, I mean, even, I think it's next week or the week after, I mean, we're going to be designating the Doobie Brothers Home as a historic landmark or something silly. I mean, you know, whatever, it's not a big deal to me either way. But but we we expend some of this time and energy doing that for homes and other areas. And so for me, I mean, yeah, I think it's a worthwhile effort. I mean, it seems to me, based on the little that I know about cultural heritage districts, that it would it would give some sort of protection as to the respective district and maybe, you know, direct development to be, you know, in line with the certain policies as it relates to preserving the heritage and the culture of that respective neighborhood. If that's the case, yeah, I think that's a wonderful thing to do. We didn't talk about it, Ron. Someone else had brought it to me. Just mention it very quickly, but I know that other council members were taking that up, so I didn't, I didn't go down that route. But yeah, I think it's something important to discuss and to explore. And if so, I mean, I think I think it should be done. I mean, it seems to make sense to me based on what I know about it.
Great. Thank you. Other questions from folks here, I see, you know, we've got Robin from San Jose Museum of Art. You have any questions for the council member or any of the other folks here?
No, thanks, Ron. But thank you for hosting this and yeah, appreciate being here. It's been very illuminating. Artfully illuminating.
Artfully illuminating. Well, thank you for joining us, you know. You know, part of part of our mission at San Jose Arts Advocates is to be able to host these type of conversations and forums with our elected officials, especially since a lot of them may not be aware of some of the, you know, arts and cultural concerns, issues, initiatives that should be approached and addressed in our city of San Jose. So so thank you for joining us, Robin. I see Dave and excuse me, Poshel, his last name has posted something in chat. He says, hi, folks. I love the arts. He's active with Sierra Club. Yeah. Do you want to, would you like to contribute to the conversation, Dave?
Okay, well, I tell you, I I came here to learn and listen because I really do truly love the arts. I really think we need more community-based arts. I love the murals, you know, showing the diversity of all of the cultures of San Jose. I really think that's the way we need to go. But there is something that, you know, the Sierra Club and Audubon Society has been concerned about with this proposal for a light tower in the arena green. So I don't want to dominate the conversation, but perhaps if the council member wants to discuss how it fits in with the larger arts community in San Jose, you know, if you have thoughts that you know, I didn't come here to, you know, to fight over this issue. I'm really trying to learn, but I, but you know, that's what's on my mind if we have time.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you, Dave, because it is, you know, connected to being creative and artistic, even though it doesn't fall in D two. But, you know, as a city council member, we'd like to hear your thoughts about that.
Yeah, I mean, well, listen, I mean, it was unanimous vote to to move that forward. I think now we're starting to evaluate how much staff time and what the cost is going to be to the city. This was brought forward by some committees from San Jose Rotary, which, you know, I appreciate their efforts and such. And so I I like them, you know, think that the city of San Jose, and I've heard this consistently, sort of lacks this place, this there, there, right? And so it seems to me that this this thing they want to put up, assuming it eventually gets built, is really an attempt to do that. What is it? The Breeze of Innovation, right, Dave? I personally think it looks beautiful, but I also understand and can appreciate some of the environmental concerns as it relates to the lighting and things of that nature. And so you know, I I suspect this is going to continue to move down the path of, you know, maybe eventually being built. You know, so those are my general thoughts about it. But I I I know even Paul Soto today during, I think it was the NSC, he mentioned that he didn't consider it art. I do. I mean, I consider some of these, not not a lot of buildings in San Jose, but there are even buildings that I've seen that I think are beautiful works of art. And so you know, assuming this gets built the way they say it's going to get built. Again, it's pleasing to my eyes, but I also understand, again, we live in a city where folks have different opinions and feelings about things, and we need to be cognizant of the environmental impacts as well. And so you know, my hope is that as it moves forward, that the folks like like Dave and other folks that have concerns about it continue to stay engaged and hold those folks as well as the city's feet to the fire to make sure it's done in a responsible way.
Thank you, Councilmember. And thank you, Dave, for joining us. I think there are opportunities, you know, one of the things that San Jose Arts Advocates is trying to move towards is collaborative efforts with other sectors. We know that arts and culture play a valuable role in the environment, right? In the green movement. And so for us, you know, we could have some, you know, continued conversation, you know, down the road. But San Jose Arts Advocates, it's not about being siloed. It's about trying to find opportunities for partnership and collaboration. Because artistry, culture and creativity flows throughout our entire community, whatever sector it is. And that's something, you know, that I think we need to always, and Brother Paul Soto brought it up so well. I mean, I love that that what he said, but art is the soul made visible. A lot of folks don't realize that our communities, myself, as a Filipino, culture, music, dance is all a part of who we are. And so I think we have to continue to find ways to see how those, what I call points of intersection are happening across our different areas in our lives. Paul, do you have another question? That hand from the previous previous time?
I think you said Viva Larry Etleon.
Oh, thank you so much, brother.
That's right.
Viva Larry Manong very Larry Etleon, that many people know when we talk about art also. The New Delano Manongs Park, which has been established in the city of San Jose. We're actually working, I'm on the committee to have artistic and creative representation of the Manongs contributions in that park. So.
I would like to speak to the issue that Councilman Jimenez brought up with respect to the art that was taken down. The police, the police exercised power. This is what I mean about art. Is that the police department exercised power with Kim Walech? Those relationships and what she did is circumvented the entire process and had that artwork removed. This is an exercise of power where Anglos in this city since eighteen forty-six of July fourteenth have constantly, constantly been exercising power, so much so that they censored that artwork. And that artwork is consistent with my experience here in the Vodis. So we have to get to a point where whites can sit down, stay quiet, don't speak a word, sit down and listen and be introduced to how much they don't know. That that until we get to that point, it's going to be a struggle. But it has to come from them, not us. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for your comments. Councilmember, did you want to chime in on that or?
No, no, I mean, I, you know, I, you know, I often with Paul's comments, I mean, you know, I often agree with them. I just don't know if I would say it in that particular way, but but I but I can understand his, you know, the frustration with how things are and you know, I think at the very core of some of his comments, and I desire this too, I'm sure we all desire this, is just to to be respected, to have dignity, to be recognized, to be seen. And so I think that's where some of his comments come from. I think, based on what I hear, and I appreciate them. And you know, I think we all play a role in our city government, right? I have a particular role. He has a particular role and I appreciate his participation.
Thank you. You know, want to make sure that we have an opportunity to also are there any questions, especially from our core group members? We have several who are here this evening. I also want to just thank Yori and Dana Harris. They're part of our core. I'm sure you're familiar with the school Visual Philosophy that's over on the Alameda. They're one of our also key core group members here.
An arts-related business. Yeah. Could I ask a question?
Sure.
What I'm curious about is you all that are in this space, you know, day in, day out, right? You live this, you breathe this. Whether it's a museum of art, whether it's you, Mighty Mike, whatever, right? Everyone here. What are the challenges here in San Jose, just broadly speaking, right? Very general, but what, why? Why do folks go to San Francisco to see, do or see some of these things as opposed to stay here and do it? What is it about the city?
I'm going to turn it over to Mighty Mike. Can share some of his perspective.
Well, I I I mean, as a poet, I chose a profession that is inherently, you know, instant millions, you know. And so it's for me, it's real easy, you know, no, but in all seriousness. I have always just sort of been prepared for the notion that I'm going to have to move someday, that I won't be able to live here anymore. Because the arts just aren't. They've just never felt important enough by a majority of the city. That business and technology will always, will always take the forefront. And the arts will always be relegated to the background. You know, and that it's the first thing that gets cut. You know, the fact that we're, the fact that most of the arts are tied to a transit occupancy tax, it really hurts us, you know, because then that means that if we don't have tourists. Yeah. You know, so if we don't have people coming to our conventions and coming in for tourism, then, you know, it's it's saying, well, the arts are only important as long as we're making money. You know, as long as the city is making money, then we can fund the arts. And it's it doesn't have to be that way, you know. And so I I have many, many friends who live all over the United States who used to live here. You know, because they are artists and they chose a career in the arts. So I want to stay here, you know. I don't, I don't ever want to leave. But, you know, that's not my choice. So I, yeah, so I'm really, I can only speak for myself, but those are experiences that I'm certain have been shared with other people. So.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thanks for listening. I appreciate it.
I want to turn it over to Ava.
Lines, there doesn't seem to be a pride. I mean, you know, the Arts Advocates is doing its best to 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 make private funding for the arts a priority. However, you know, the the big, even in Silicon Valley, if you look at the numbers, private enterprises is not investing into the arts in their in their cities. And and I believe, I mean, I have nothing except for experience, just to say that, as Mike said, that it's it's about technology and business. And somehow, you know, I myself am a writer and somehow the intellectual pursuit of things that don't earn us money is just not a priority in San Jose. And it's such a pity because you know, the East Bay, Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco, they're great cities and people go there for intellectual and artistic pursuits to experience it and to do it as well. My two cents. Thanks.
And and to, you know, raise up and support what Ava and Mighty Mike have said. You know, having come from San Francisco originally, and, you know, I moved to San Jose sixteen years ago because of a job opportunity. And also, one of the reasons why I, along with my fellow arts advocates here, founded San Jose Arts Advocates is that there was no one advocating for our artists, our arts and cultural organizations, our creatives here in this city. I I sat on the Center of the Arts Commission for eight years. And usually may have been one of the lone voices, progressive voices to talk about the value of artists and investing in arts and cultural organizations in San Jose. So I echo what these folks are saying because what's happening is that the city will, you know, acknowledge and recognize and support artists, arts and cultural organizations when we do something big. You know, when we bring something, you know, to the city. But that's where it stops. After that, it's like, well, okay, that was good. Now they go and shift their focus somewhere else. Many of our San Jose artists, many of them who raised her, have gone on to to be successful outside of San Jose. And, you know, I've monitored that, you know, and I asked them, I'll reach out to a good example, you know, it's Chilista. You know, an amazing, it's Freya, you know, it's, she is an amazing performing artist. She had to leave San Jose to seek work outside of here because there was no support, you know, from the community as well as, you know, other opportunities from the city as well as the larger, you know, community here. So I think basically what we're all saying, Sergio, is that the city doesn't really recognize the value of artists and arts and cultural organizations and will only do so when it's good for them.
Yeah, and we need to make it a priority, right? Is yeah, I appreciate that. I, yeah. Comments to the heart. I mean, they're, I don't think they're wrong.
I'm sure. And you know, with the pandemic, you know, we actually have lost several arts and cultural organizations who have closed their doors. Because they were, you know, again, you know, the the city, many of them just relied just on city funding. You know, even though, you know, many of them were looking at other opportunities for funding, but that's a good example. The city and county of San Francisco, when the pandemic hit, Mayor Breed, you know, as I was monitoring, you know, initiated, you know, investment in the arts, cultural and creativity community in San Francisco for relief efforts. We had to ask for American Rescue Plan funding to be allocated to our artists and cultural and creative community. San Francisco didn't have to do that. The electeds and the mayor saw that they were a valuable asset, cultural, creative asset, and therefore said, we And therefore said, we have to make sure these folks are supported and weather through this pandemic. We had to, you know, lack of a better term, we had to beg and say, you know, please support us, you know, or else artists are going to have to like move arts and cultural organizations. They're going to have to close the doors.
Yeah.
So I hope that, you know, and, you know, kind of shed some light in terms of some of the, the challenges that we in the arts and cultural industry, and it is an industry, you know, I can provide you with statistics and data in terms of what the creative economy contributes to the city of San Jose and to the state of California. Yet we are, you know, as, as Mighty Mike and Ava have said, you know, and even Paul, we are relegated to the backend.
You can only, you can only pass around the hat so many times, right?
Yeah, you know, and then, you know, people will go like, oh, they're coming by, the artists and the cultural folks are coming with the hat again, you know? But we don't want to be, we want to be thought of, you know, initially without us having to ask.
Okay. All right. I appreciate those.
No, we thank you for, for, for asking that question because a lot of times, you know, we don't get asked that, you know, what is it that we face as an industry, as a sector? So I hope that's provided you with some insight in terms of some of the continued challenges we make even now. You know, as we're trying to recover and that's why we are asking, you know, have us be part of the solution. You know, uh, find opportunities for, to fund. I mean, a great example, School of Arts and Culture where, you know, Jessica, uh, you know, changed and, you know, kind of, and made the, the plaza a community site for vaccination and for testing. You know, because they knew they had to close their programming because there was going to be very little support from the city and other, uh, you know, funding, uh, funders because priorities were shifting. So.
Can I ask you a question too? And this is something I don't know, but does the county provide any funding?
The county provides funding to Silicon Valley Creates, SV Creates. Because what many people don't know is that SV Creates is our county's arts agency. Every county in the state of California has to have a designated arts agency. And, yeah, so, um, the relationship there is that the county, uh, works with SV Creates, provides them with funding so they can re-grant to organizations. But then again, it's, it's not that much. And then, you know, in the past, doing my research, a certain supervisors, you know, had special projects that are arts-related that they would earmark some fa- funding for. I, uh, along with several folks have for the many years been in conversations with some of our supervisors to say, why doesn't Santa Clara County have an arts commission, arts and cultural commission? Why is there no process in place for allocation of funding to support arts and cultural organizations and the creative industry in the county of Santa Clara? Because there is none. And Santa Clara County is one of the largest counties in California. So, and I speak also from my position, probably you know, I'm the newly elected board president of Californians for the Arts, which is our statewide arts advocacy organization of which San Jose Arts Advocates is a partner with. So benefit of my knowledge and, and work at the state levels, helping inform one of, some of the things that the city of San Jose and Santa Clara County should be, uh, focused on.
Well, listen, I think going back to an earlier question you asked me, what, what is that you, you can help with? And I think under better understanding this infrastructure, right? As it exists today and figuring out how we can make those changes. Because it, you know, I don't eat, sleep and breathe art. Um, but I care about it, sincerely do. And, and so, um, but I don't fully understand sort of the, the, the space that you all are in, right? Even, I mean, just the question about the county, right? That probably exposes the fact that I know nothing about how it's funded. Uh, but, um, you know, I didn't know that. So I think this dedication is going to be important as it relates to the elected officials.
And that's again, yeah, and thank you so much for having transition. That has been part of our role and why we hold these forums with our elected officials in San Jose. Part of our work is to educate and to help inform our city council members so that they can realize they can be champions for the arts and cultural, uh, community here in San Jose. So, you know, that's why we really appreciate you making time, um, to be involved, uh, in this forum and to answer questions and to just engage us in conversation, which of course, you know, we hope doesn't stop here.
Yeah, of course, of course. I mean, I hope you know, you could reach out anytime. I mean, you, you have my contact information, but, uh, yeah, thank you for having these events. I appreciate it. Uh, and I, and I hope that every, every council member has and continues to lend themselves to, to, to be part of this conversation. I think it's important.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you all for all you do.
Oh, you're welcome. I mean, it's, it's just part of the work, you know, part of, it's just like any cause, right? You got it. We have to like make sure that we advocate. So those joining us, thank you so much. You can join us, uh, you know, uh, you know, we are celebrating our, I believe, what? Our second anniversary as a formal arts advocacy collective. Two years, as Ava says, two years we've been around. And this is because of just the passion that all of us have to ensure that arts, culture and creativity continue to thrive and, and in the city of San Jose. So you can visit us on our website, sanjodeartsadvocates.org. Check out, we're social media savvy. So you can find us on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. You know, uh, we also have, uh, an e-blast that we put out. So go to our website and subscribe to our e-newsletter. We, you can find our information and events and activities like the, this, uh, forum, um, for the future. And I, we were happy to also accept, I saw, you know, somebody say about Councilmember Davis, invite her. You know, I think we may even have had an opportunity to do that, but if there are other folks that you'd like us to, to bring on and, and, you know, have them, have a conversation about arts and culture, uh, please share that with us. And again, thank you so much to Councilmember Sergio Jimenez for joining us and for all of you. So from all of us here at San Jose Arts Advocates, thank you so much. And remember, keep arts, culture and creativity foremost in your lives because that's what makes us thrive. And again, thank you so much to Paul Soto because art is the soul made visible. So thank you, everybody. We'll see you again next time.